I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before we actually begin the meeting, there's a few details I need to bring to your attention. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion through the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record, not as a transcript. When you come to the podium, please identify yourself with your name and your address so that she can record who is speaking. We will follow the items that appear on our agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda. When the case is called, the applicant should come to the podium, identify him or herself or their agent, identify him or herself, and then be sworn, and then they will have the opportunity to present their case. During the presentation of their case, the board may have questions for the applicant. And when all the questions have been answered and the applicant has finished the presentation, we will open it up for public input. We'll open it up in three categories of public input. First is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then there are those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And last, those who just wish to speak to the application but aren't really for it, against it, or aren't sure what their position with respect to it might be. Once that's concluded, we'll give the applicant the opportunity to respond to any points that were raised during the public portion of the meeting. And when that's concluded, then the case will be closed and we'll move on to the next case. Once we've heard all the cases that are on our agenda, we will take a short break, and then we will return to deliberate and reach decisions on the matters before us. We do that in the order that the items appear on the agenda and that the representatives of the applicants are present. So if the first case on the agenda, the applicant has left, we would take the second case if that applicant was still present. If all the applicants are here, we just take them in the order that they appear on the agenda. You don't have to stay. If you wish to learn what our decision is, you can, of course, watch us on TV, or you can call the Office of Zoning and Planning tomorrow, and they can tell you what the decision on the application was. I believe at this point, we're ready for our first case. Oh, first, I do need to introduce a couple of new people that are on the TV screen tonight. This is Greg Nearpass, who is our new zoning board attorney. He's joining us tonight for the first time. We'll try and make it easy on him as we go through. Also, we have Nick Weatherby with us, who is the new director of planning, and we have our engineer from La Bella Associates. Now we can call our first case.
Thank you. First item on the addendum, case number CB 1403-1. Upon the matter of request by James Pavia for an area variance to park a commercial work van pursuant to section 235.104.1. E6 of Town Code on premises 263 Governor Terrace in an R1 residential district.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Matt Pavia. I live at 34 Twilight Drive. I'm here representing my father tonight, who is in Florida. He's actually closing on a residential property down there as well.
All right. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm requesting a variance at the address of 263 Governor Terrace so that the commercial work van can be parked at the home after work hours. We requested this for a maximum of five years. My father plans to downsize, retire, get rid of the house. The van belongs to a business of his entitled Maplewood Thrift and Collectibles. It's located at 1035 Dewey Avenue in the city of Rochester. Basically, we're looking to keep it at the house. We've had multiple break-ins at the store, attempts of breaking in at the van. It's just not safe there to keep overnight. That's pretty much what we're looking to do, is hopefully keep it there, backed against, behind the garage basically, or parallel with the garage as our driveway goes east and west. So we're looking to do that.
I noticed that attached to your father's application, there was a sheet that had signatures from, it looks like, five of the neighbors, immediate, in the immediate vicinity, directly across the street. They're up and behind, immediately next door, indicating that they were not opposed to and were in favor of allowing the variance that he's requesting.
That's correct.
Are you aware of any neighbors who are opposing it?
I had one neighbor that was northwest of the residence that she was not in favor of, and she was pretty clear in telling me that she didn't want it there. That's the only one that I'm aware of.
And would there be any difficulty if we were to approve it, as one of the conditions of approval being that the van's to be parked at the very end of the driveway and as close to the house as is practical?
That would be fine.
So that it minimizes the exposure?
That would be fine.
And would you have any objection to backing it in?
So at the front?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, that's one of the things I was thinking about. Does it have one of those things that beeps when it backs up?
Yeah, I think it's required by that, for that size, to have a beeper on it.
All right. And is there any reason that that gets taken out after, say, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night?
We could try to disable it at that. Something with like a kill switch, we could disable it.
No, no, no. I'm not looking to disable it and get you in a problem. I'm just trying to think of the neighbors. In past instances where we've had trucks and vans that beep, if it's backed in and it's pulled out at night, then it doesn't beep. And when you come back at night, we then ask you to pull it into the driveway so that the beeping takes place in the morning and not at during the night.
That's fine, yeah.
All right. Would that be, that'd be out?
Yeah.
I assume there's probably not much occasion, given the nature of this van, for it to go out?
No, it would not be, you know, once it's home, it's home. It's not going out.
Yeah.
10:00 o'clock at night or anything like that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I'm just trying to get a better perspective of, you've got some nice pictures here. And judging from the pictures, it looks as though the van is actually behind the rear foundation of the house. Is that right?
Uh, I...
Or almost?
It would be close, because I'm trying to think of where the, where the garage is in the back there, how much of the foundation is extended past there. I'm not confident saying 100% either way, but it is back even. The garage is 90 degrees to the driveway, so we have to go in and make a 90-degree right-hand turn. So it's completely even with the garage and the back fence line there. Not sure if that helps out.
So it's definitely out of the common view of the person driving down the street, right?
Yes.
And that's the, that's the idea, that we get that back in there as far as it can go?
Yeah, that's right.
Excellent.
The only thing I get is I can see the sign out front when I went by on Sunday. Was it out?
Yeah, it was out. I was over there on Sunday as well. This, this pass on, just...
Yeah?
Yeah.
Where was it?
It was in the front. There was a snow pile, and it was sitting in, let's see, it was probably eight or nine feet from the right-hand side of the driveway.
Okay. Because I didn't see it when I went by.
We had to get, we had to replace it. I know we replaced it at least once in the couple of weeks that we had it out, just because of the weather and then the snow block coming by.
Is this, is this your dad's residence?
Yes.
Does he use the van on a daily basis?
For the most part. It could be two or three days before it's moved, but I would say on average, it's probably three days a week. It's just kind of as we needed for deliveries and stuff for our customers.
Is there a reason he's not parking it at his business?
Yeah, there's been, the neighborhood that it's in, on Dewey Avenue and Bryan Street, we've had multiple break-ins at the store. We've had attempted break-ins on the van. If the van were to go down, we'd be losing income of making deliveries and things like that. So leaving it there is just high risk for, for damage or for it to be stolen. We don't keep any vehicles there.
What type of business?
It's a thrift and collectible store.
And there's nowhere, a garage at that store that could be put into?
Oh, there's a garage, but it wouldn't fit in there. It's a very small garage door.
Do you typically leave stuff in the van at night?
Yep. There could be furniture left in it, just as we, you know, if he purchases something, picks it up, and then brings it to the store the next day, there could be furniture in it. So leaving it at the store would be potentially at risk.
Now, the neighbor to the left of your dad's house, if you're looking at the house, that neighbor, is that one of the neighbors that's on the acceptable sheet that's written in, or is that a neighbor that's not in favor?
His name is Ali. It's 273 Governor Terrace. He was in favor of it.
He signed it.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application?
My name is Frank La Patito. I live at 253 Governor Terrace. And when Mr. Pavia's van is parked all the way to the back, I can look out my bedroom window and see his orange van, the roof of his van. And then when it's parked in the front of the driveway, it blocks the view of people going up and down the street. But the guy that lives next door to him at 273 that signed the paper didn't know what he was signing. And you can call him, and you can ask him. But I live right next door. And, I mean, if you allow people to have cube vans in their, in their driveways now, what's not going to say that you're going to be doing it to other places in the town? I mean, I moved there, I pay over $5,000 a year in taxes. I don't want to look at this guy's cube van when I wake up in the morning, and I draw my blinds, and I see his orange cube van. I don't want to see that. I live in a, you know, live in a nice town, supposedly. So let's try and keep it that way.
You said the, the van is orange?
Yep. The box is orange.
The sign?
The sides of it are orange. They're bright orange.
There's a sign on it or something?
There's a sign on the door, but the whole box is bright orange. It's not white. It's bright orange.
You can kind of see it in the one picture, the lower left-hand picture, you can see that.
I missed what you said about the neighbor. Immediate next door.
The neighbor at 273, he's a, he's a foreigner, and I talked to him, me and my wife talked to him, and he didn't know what he was signing that day.
Oh.
Because my wife even asked him. She goes, "Did you sign the form for Mr. Pavia?" He goes, "Yeah." He goes, "What was it?" He goes, "To keep his van in the driveway." His van is right next to his house. I mean, it's, might as well be butt up against his house. You know, when he looks out his window, he looks right at his van. So, you know, the guy, the guy's a foreigner. He has no idea. You know what I mean? So you can even call him, you know, or I'll even give you the number. I'll call him, you know, whatever, but he said he made a mistake. And, you know, I live right next door. It's just an eyesore. You know? I mean, the guy's got a, and it doesn't move like he says it moves. That thing sits there for weeks on end. Weeks. Doesn't move. So, I don't know. You guys do what you gotta do, but I think it's, it shouldn't be there. I mean, if you allow one, who's to say you're not going to allow everybody else? I'll go buy a cube van tomorrow, keep it in my driveway, you know, I'm going to get a variance. You know, people don't want to see that stuff in their, in their residential area. They don't want to see that. It's awful. You know, keep it at work. What's up? You know? What are you going to do? If that's your business, and you need to find somewhere else to keep it, but not at your house? You know? If it's a regular van, but not a freaking 11 and a half foot cube van that's painted orange, I don't think that's all right. Don't have to say.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here to speak to this application? Did you wish to respond to?
I would.
Okay.
I'd like to kind of address the situation with the neighbor at 273. If, I'm feeling that it was kind of mentioned that I may have been taking advantage of this guy. If I asked him a question, I said, "This is to sign, to keep this here in favor," and he signs, it's my assumption that he understands. If he has other motives after the fact or doesn't understand, I just wanted to be clear that I was not trying to take advantage of this guy. And I went there twice, not once, to ask. I didn't have the paperwork. He said, "Come back when you have it." So I asked him again. I asked him two times before, before that was signed. As far as the van being orange, it was white. We had someone who was doing our marketing that was supposed to finish painting it and lettering it. It didn't happen. It's orange. I don't like the orange. If it's the color, no problem getting it back to white as it was when it was purchased. As far as it being there for weeks on end, I can speak to that because my father is gone. He's in Florida. If there's no deliveries that I need to go make, and he's not, he has employees at his business, but if it's not being out for deliveries, then yes, it is going to sit there. It's the middle of winter. We're not super busy right now. That's, that's the nature of the business. So as far as it being in the, in the eyesight of anything like that, it never had come about until some other issues that came up with a fence with Frank here as well. So none of this really happened until we kind of went through a whole situation kind of outside of the van. And I think there are some personal aspects that are being brought into this tonight outside of the van being parked in the driveway.
I have a question. Going back to Dad's, your father's business is on Dewey Avenue, there's a spot there for the van. You've parked the van there before. You unload and load the van there?
We've, we'll unload furniture as we purchase, and we have not left it there. We've had a break, attempted break-in while we're there at the, at the business during hours.
But you do have a place of business that the van could be parked at.
Correct.
And again, and I always go based on the fact that if it was in my neighborhood, if it was next door to me, I wouldn't like it either. And we have made exceptions to those rules sometimes when people don't have a place to put a van or, or, but in this particular instance, you, your father has a business, has a place of business where a commercial vehicle can be parked. Having Dad park this one in this, in his driveway is, I could see the gentleman's point of view, especially in this particular instance where he has another spot to park it. And I understand there's an issue with where he's, where his business is, but that is not, the people who live in Aronacote, live on that street, their issue. It's Dad's issue. If he needs to secure it, put a fence around it, or whatever the case, you know, to make it safe at work, that might be a more proper place for the van.
I think that paying the taxes and doing things like that to live in this town would make it worthwhile for us to come here and at least present this case to you, because going out and having that extra expense for something that we feel is, for 90% of the neighbors, not a problem, but for one person who has a personal issue with my father, I think that it just needs to be considered that, yes, we pay taxes as well, and we need to protect our business. And it'd be, we're, again, just looking for fairness to have you guys consider it. That's all.
Why do you need five years?
It would be a maximum of five years, because, again, my dad is, when he's back from Florida this time, he's retiring, the house is going to be up for sale, and I'm not even sure that business is going to continue.
Well, then what's the minimum you need?
Two years. Like, sorry, I don't mean the minimum is two years, two years. If a year, a year is reasonable, but I would be willing to say three years is the max instead of five.
Is it possible to, I'm just going to sound like I'm reversing myself, but is it possible to move it up further so that it's not visible to the neighbor to the south?
Neighbor, yeah. If, I'm not sure if his view over the top of our roof line and the garage roof line there, if I was between, I could. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how.
My thinking is if it's parked in front of what appears to be the garage.
Yep.
That then it wouldn't be visible from the south.
I'd be willing to do that as long as that's out of his view.
Just to clarify, you said that when your father comes back in about 15 days, he's planning to retire?
He's planning to get back in the house in the springtime, get the house ready to be sold, and I would say by the end of 2014, the house will be up for sale.
And when the house is sold, he's going to retire?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
We'll close the case with respect to this matter, move on to the next case.
Next item on the addendum is case number CB 1403-2. Upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for the Triad Group, Ridge Road Parcel LLC, for area variances to redevelop and construct a plus or minus 4,000 square foot building with less than required rear and side street setbacks, lot area and dimension and parking on premises 1495 East Ridge Road, tax ID number 091.08-2-75.1 in an M manufacturing district.
My name is Chris Santoma, landscape architect with Costage Engineering, and we're here representing the Triad Group for these variance requests tonight.
If you could, raise your right hand. The other right. Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. As Donna mentioned, we are going, we are requesting five variances, lot area, lot depth, side street setback, rear yard setback, and parking. And I'd like to go into a little of the history of the project to help you understand, potentially understand it a little better. They are, the, our client is purchasing the property and going to demolish the existing mobile station and the canopy that's there. In addition to that, they're also going to close off both curb cuts, the one on Goodman and the one on Ridge. So it essentially becomes part of the plaza. There's not going to be any individual access to the plaza. There will be irrevocable cross-access service, maintenance, and parking easements for both sites, for access. With that in mind, we decided, well, they needed to have a 4,000 square foot building because at the time when it was first designed, we didn't know the tenants, but the tenants have since been identified as Starbucks and Chipotle. With that in mind, they needed to have a lot line that would accommodate both their uses. So instead of just taking the existing lot, we needed to, because of these financing and other type of funding deals, he needed to keep the area the same, but we needed to change the lot line. So that necessitates our lot depth and lot area. Currently, you know, the, the lot is existing non-conforming to current zoning, but by moving the lot line to accommodate a building that meets its minimum requirements, we have a 118-foot plus or minus depth where 200 is required, and we have an 18,975-foot lot area where 20,000 square foot is required. The area is exactly the same as the original parcel, once again, due to the funding and lending sources. We feel that those are minor, and it's existing non-conforming, so we believe that if we didn't change the lot line, we'd still have those same issues to deal with. So we believe those are not substantial variances or requests. The rear yard setback, once again, keeping the funding in mind for the 18,975 square feet, and the need to get as much parking and drive-through space as possible. The five foot is the minimum that we can do with, for a rear yard setback, and that's supposed to be 60. We're providing five. However, it should be noted that in between, directly behind that is just more parking lot. So it's, it's not infringing upon anybody's right of usage or view sheds or anything like that. The side street setback, as the project was being developed by the tenants' architects, Starbucks decided they needed a bump out to help facilitate their drive-through business. So the building was bumped out. We cannot move the building any closer to the sanitary sewer to the west, so we had to bump it out. So we're asking for a 48-foot setback where 50 is required in the side street along Goodman. And finally, the parking, once again, looking at the plaza as a whole, there's existing 605 spaces. With this building and its parking, there's 612 spaces, which is a net of seven additional spaces. The existing parking ratio is approximately 4.2 per thousand. The ratios we have shown it on our plans is 4.14 per thousand. So we're really asking for a variance of, if we were to keep the existing 4.2 spaces per thousand square feet ratio would necessitate nine additional spaces, so we'd be looking for a variance for nine if you were to maintain that it's 4.5 spaces required, because the building itself falls under 100,000 square feet. Being part of the plaza, it totals 147,870 square feet. So it's kind of in between the town's existing parking codes. So even at 4.5, we'd be looking for a variance for 11 spaces versus nine spaces if you were to allow us to have the same ratio as the existing plaza at 4.2. There's existing, like I said, there's existing parking behind it, and at least to my knowledge, that area has never really been full with parking. So we believe that although the number itself may seem substantial, that the variance itself isn't in reality, because there is more than enough adequate parking with the addition of any and all cross-access service and parking easements. So I'd like to open up for questions.
Is the property owned by the same, is the Tops?
Yes.
So Triad owns both?
Correct. But the funding involved for each parcel.
Is separate.
Necessitates it be separate parcels, because they were bought at different times. And the, the issue of trying to get it re-subdivided to re-code, the funding sources for the plaza are different than the funding sources for the mobile piece.
Right.
So the plaza, I guess the plaza lender isn't all that happy about having to give up some value as far as additional land, even though the owner's okay with it, the lender isn't okay with it.
But I read in the, in this booklet that you handed out, that the easements have been granted or will be granted if this is all, if this all gets passed.
Correct.
Right. But the easements are basically between their own company.
Well, between the, the parent company, yes.
I mean, Triad owns both parcels, so they're just giving easements to themselves.
Correct.
It, it, does an easement stay with, and I believe it does, with, if, if they were to sell off parcels separately, whether it be the Plaza parcel or whether it be the Starbucks parcel, if, if one of those got sold off, do the easements stay in effect?
I believe they would be, because we are essentially making this piece of property landlocked and that we're cutting off its curb cuts so that...
So you need the easements.
Correct. You would need the easements just to access the site.
Again, that's, I guess that's from my counsel. The easements would stay in effect forever in the event that the properties got sold off. The next buyer would have to agree to the easements in order to purchase the property.
Yeah, they would take, I mean, the easements are going to be recorded.
How does it happen to be?
Yeah. So if they're going to be recorded, then yeah, they're going to be part of the county land records. So there'll be, anybody that purchases one of those parcels subsequently is going to take, subject to them.
And these easements, just to clarify, include extra parking spaces? So can we call it the Tops parcel and the Starbucks parcel? There will be an easement that will allow people from the Starbucks parcel?
Cross-access service?
Yeah. But there will, will there be dedicated parking?
As far as dedicated, you mean like signed parking for each use or?
Well, specifically, if someone buys the Tops parcel, they're going to, I mean, one of the issues is there's not, there's not enough parking on this piece of property. So where are people going to park? A lot of people want to go to Chipotle, not go out to Starbucks.
They will, they'll have ability to park within the Tops Plaza based on the access and parking easement that will be given.
And they'll, they will always have that with the easement.
They'll be, well, they'll make it irrevocable, or however the town wishes, or the town zoning board attorney wishes, the wording to be to make it so it's irrevocable, so they, they will be able to park anywhere on site for it, any more than if, if you're using the Tops parcel, you'd be able to park at Chipotle and walk on down to the Tops parcel as well.
Your whole drive-through lane is on the other property.
Correct.
So I mean... So I mean, you'd have to have a strong easement so...
Right. No, there'll be service, access, and maintenance easements for each that would cover any and all things you may need to do on the adjacent property.
Right. So the parking, so just the, on the parking variance, it's not like there's dedicated spots on, you know, what we're calling the Tops parcel, right? It's just there's a...
I don't believe that's the intention.
Okay. I just had a, had a question on the, on the parking variance. On your application, you had, I think you had gone with the other standard of one space per 100 square feet. So you were saying you needed a total of 40 spaces. And you have, I think it was 26 on the, on the parcel. So you're looking for a variance for 14 spaces?
Well, depending on how you look at it, I wanted to look at it because I was talking to Donna, she thought it's just look at it as separate parcel. But the more I was thinking about it, it really is no longer a separate parcel. I mean, legally it is, but in reality, it's going to be part of the plaza because there's no other access to it. So that's why, I mean, that's why we'd be looking for, we could ask any variance, I mean, whichever way the town board views it to be requested, we can request it that way as well.
Right. Because, because, I mean, they are separate parcels. And, and I mean, I understand it's the same, it's, it's common ownership. But the application that was made was for the smaller parcel, for the Starbucks and Chipotle parcel. So I'm just, and like I said, the requested variance here goes, which I think is the correct standard because we're taking, we're looking at that application itself and it's a 4,000 square foot use. So that needs, you know, 40 parking spaces. And, you know, it sounds like through the, through the parking easement with, with the Tops parcel, you know, those additional 14 will probably be sufficient, you know?
Correct.
So, but it, it brings into the other issue then, what happens with, what happens on, on the Tops parcel? Because, you know, what's happened with, with the improvements and specifically the drive lane, it looks like you're taking out about 19 spaces or so with, with this development. And so that brings down, that brings down the parking ratio on that other parcel.
Well, there's existing, was it 605 spots that we're proposing 612? So there's a net of seven.
Net gains.
Net gains, right. If, if we're combining everything together, right?
And looking, looking at it as, as a parking field for all the uses, including all the other old parcels on the site as well. With, with that, with that ratio in mind, we're, we need a lot, you know, we only are nine short with that ratio.
But if you're looking, if you're looking at it that way, then you're looking at, well, we gained 12 or seven, whatever that number of spaces is. But you're also adding 4,000 square feet of...
Correct. So we go from 143, 170, to 147,870. And, you know, to, to maintain the 4.2 spaces, we would need an additional, was it 20, 23 spaces? We showed additional seven. So that, that would be the difference for it. I mean, I have talked over with, with most, recently Donna, the parking issue and prior to her, you know, Larry Heinegger. So we have tried to, to make it so it works for the town and makes it as, you know, easy for you to welcome and hopefully approve our request to do this. I mean, we're, listening to staff and how you feel needs to be asked. Not even, we are still asking for the variance for, we'd like to ask for the variance for this one piece. If we need X amount of spaces for it on this piece, so this way the bottom piece still has its 605 spaces to use, so they wouldn't require the additional permits or variances.
Right. See, and, and that's my, that's not problem, but my kind of issue is that, you know, the application itself and, you know, the tax ID number that's, that's, you know, referenced on the application is for the smaller parcel. And, and it sounds like for some of the variances, we're only looking at the smaller parcel. But for the parking one, let's consider the adjacent parcel as well. And, and I, I don't think there's, I mean, I, I just don't think that the board, you know, should be able to look at a particular variance based on more than what the parcel that it's been, been applied for. I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a separate issue. I think, you know, my looking at this is, is the variance that you're looking for would be as to the Starbucks parcel for, for 14 spaces, based on the one space per 100 square feet.
Yeah, that's...
Right. And then that, and then separate from that is, you know, now we have, you know, because of the development and the Starbucks bump out, there's, there's a decrease in the parking ratio for the plaza from, I think, 4.2 to 4.14. And so I think that itself is a separate variance that needs to be applied for. I don't think it's anything that, that holds up the, the variances you've applied for here today, but I think it is a separate variance that stays with...
That's, that's fine. I mean, we, I don't think we have an issue with that. I, you know, I don't know if Donna has a lot to say, but we have, Donna and I have talked about this and we've tried to, to make, you know, the application the way that we believe the town wants it. And, and had we known prior to that, we, we would have made that application again this evening so as to tie them all together with...
We'll have a meeting in April.
Okay. Well, we'll make the application for it then.
Is it something we definitely feel, I mean, Chairman, is it something that we definitely feel that we need to add? Or is it just a...
I think our counsel is right. This is the application that's in front of us relates to this parcel.
Right.
And then that, the way that's being developed with the easements and everything affects the other larger parcel. And that larger parcel could come in and we can grant them a variance. I mean, I don't think there's any opposition to that.
And again, is that, is that something that is needed to do this development?
No.
Right. So then, so in, in, when they go to do something different on that development, whether a new store comes in or whatever the case, then they would look for that easement? Or is that something they would need that easement right up front?
That'd be up to them to decide, I would think.
I mean, I, I would, I mean, I would recommend that they would make application for it now because by approving this development, where, you know, we are, you know, agreeing to reducing the, the parking ratio on the plaza. And I understand there's, there's, we call that, there's that gap period right between 100,000 square feet and then if you're above
300,000.
300,000 square feet. But there is a catch-all provision in the, in the parking regulations that says that there's a use that's not defined, then it's the same as a retail business, which is the 4.5. So, you know, looking at that, so since we are, you said the plaza as a whole is about 147,000 square feet, which is, you know, in that gap period. But, you know, to me, I, I look at that catch-all and say, well, the, the ratio, and maybe it's inartfully drafted, but, you know, the ratio then goes back to this 4.5 spaces per, per 1,000 square feet.
For just the Starbucks parcel?
No, no, no. For the plaza.
Okay. Because my concern with that is that the board, although I'm sure you feel it's worthy enough to grant for this, would probably be worthy enough to grant for the plaza in that if we do that, you could have, say like, no, you're short, tear down 6,000 square feet.
Right. I mean, that, right. That could, in theory, I suppose.
Oh, no, no. But I don't expect, I don't, because that would be a very unreasonable expectation, but within the realm of possibility, although very, very, very small, I'm sure. That's, that's my only fear with saying, yes, you're right. And had I known that that was the way the town and the board viewed it, we would have made both applications this evening. So this way, even though there would be two separate, separate ones, they are, they could be considered, you know, for the same overall area.
I can't imagine a Supreme Court justice, because I'm sure if we were to do that, that you'd sue us. I can't imagine, can't imagine a Supreme Court justice saying that granting this variance and then denying one later and making you tear down part of what's there would be reasonable. I can't imagine them saying that.
I'm not an attorney. I, I wouldn't know whether that's reasonable or not. I'm, you asked me, would anything stop me? And I said, that was my fear.
Right. In theory, yes. But...
And I, I agree with you, but
Yeah.
that's, that's, that's my only concern with that. And, you know, in talking with town staff, I brought up the same thing and, and they've said basically the same thing. If, if they find that your application is worthy for this, in all likelihood, they're going to find that just as worthy.
When would, assuming that the variances are granted tonight that you're asking for, when would it be projected that Starbucks and Chipotle would actually open for business?
Probably within three or four months after, you know,
And...
or maybe up to six, depending on how they, they, I don't know how they, they, they break out the tenant space that's between the landlords.
All right. So probably by midsummer, they would be up and running.
I'd say by, definitely by, by early fall, yeah.
All right. And we know that the Tops is moving down
To deep the plaza.
to their new location. Where, when are they moving out of the plaza?
That I do not know, but I can get you the answer.
All right. So judging by the progress that they're making on that, I've got to assume that that's sometime in 2014, that they would be closing in this plaza and moving down the road. So we'd be talking a few months where there'd be full right there at that point with the new development and Tops still there before.
Potentially, yes.
Only a limited timeframe. It's a limited, I would think, to probably no more than six months, I would guess.
That, that would make sense, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, other than, as you noted, the small risk that there would be a, a tear down order, I mean, is there anything, you know, why, why you wouldn't just want to apply for another variance just for the parcel, for the plaza?
No, other than, it would, I think it's easier to present them both at the same time, but since that ship has sailed, you know, we will need, we'll do what we need to do to make the town, you know, happy about what they're trying to do here. And if it means coming back with a separate application, we'll come back. I honestly, you know, in, in being an advocate for my client, I'd like to see if we can get it resolved with just the one meeting. If that's not possible, we'll, we'll come back for, for the other one.
Yeah. And I'm only saying in that, I'm looking at it in terms of, you know, kind of advocating, you know, for, for my client too. But if you look at the, the legal notice and everything that was published, you know, it is specific, again, as to parcel, as to tax ID number, as to just, you know, the smaller property. So again, I think if the board were to act favorably on the, on the parking variance here, I don't want to speak for the board, but it sounds like it would create a favorable impression.
I will, I will say it for you. If we receive the variances that we've requested tonight, we will make application, well, I will talk with Mr. Wetherby and, and other town staff to make sure that it's applied for in the proper semantics, the proper way, and so everyone is okay with it so that, you know, we can appear before you in next month and hopefully get the variance so the whole site works for everyone's satisfaction.
Is, is there going to be any signage at the corner?
Yes.
Right now, there's a...
Yeah, there's a mobile sign.
Right. And we approved a variance for them to change the size of that sign some time ago when they were looking to reopen the mobile station, which never happened. And are they going to use the existing variance that we granted at that time?
They would, they would like to, as long as the board sees fit to allow them to do that.
Well, that, that variant, that variance ran, runs with the land. So we've already approved a sign of that size.
Then, absolutely.
My question was just whether are there, are they going to use it? Because I see that you've, on the picture that you've got up on the wall, that they've got Starbucks, you know, on the side of the building and, and that.
That's enough, just, I just, with that, so you'd see the type of building that they're projecting.
Well, it looks nice.
As far as the signage goes, there's also a signage plan that, you know, there's a, in addition to the entrances and down by the Goodman entrance and the Reddy right out, they have the panel signs that there'll be Starbucks. In addition, there'll be some other signs throughout the plaza, giving some wayfinding to help people get from one entrance to the drive-through and, and there as well. So it'll be well-signed and hopefully, you know, if not within the allotted square footage, they might be back for additional requests for variance as far as square footage for signs as well.
All right. I want to go back to the parking for a minute. I'm looking at this map and your application says that there are 26 spaces adjacent to the building. How many spaces are actually within the property line itself? Are there 17 spaces within the property line?
There are 19.
19. So for the amount of square feet, you need 40. And there really are only 19.
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying that there are 26 adjacent to it, but those additional seven are not on the property line at all? And that's nowhere near...
Portions of it aren't, correct.
Okay. All right. So what we're, the variance we'd be granting is to allow 19 spaces for 4,000 square feet, which would technically require 40 spaces. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think it's right. If there's, yeah, if there's 19 spaces on that.
I was referring to you since...
So it's 19 spaces for a Starbucks and a Chipotle? Because again, I'm only looking at this as one parcel of property, the small parcel of property. I'm not looking at overflow to the other side. Is that correct?
If you look at it as a standalone unit, you are correct.
All right. And I know you said before, in reality versus legally, but to us lawyers, to we lawyers, legally is reality.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to pretend I'm a lawyer or an attorney. All I'm saying is that we are short on the parcel. In reality, though, there's a whole huge parking lot out there that isn't fully utilized and we'd like to take advantage of that.
But we, I mean, it would be our hope that five years down the road, there would be a, there would be some business in the Tops building that would be so robust that they would need all of their parking spaces. I mean, that's what the town hopes. So then what do we do? We're short 20 spots. And not even 20 spots because the parking in the Tops Plaza is going to go down under this. So let's say we're down 25 spots. What do we do then? Where do 25 people park?
Across the street.
Across the street and they're going to cross Ridge Road and they're going to cross, I mean, that's the way I see it. Because we want Tops to, I mean, once they leave, we want something great in there. So we're going to be down from the get-go, 25 spots, it sounds like.
Or they might, the town might look into changing their parking variances to fit those unique situations that are somewhere between 100 and 300,000 square feet.
We don't, yeah.
Let me ask you, has there ever been an occasion that you're aware of when all of the spaces in the Tops Plaza have been utilized at the same time?
I don't know of any, but to be fair, I don't drive by it six or seven times a day either. So I live in Webster, work in the city, so...
Well, you have, across the, across Ridge Road East, where you're going to close the curb cut, you're going to be picking up, based on this, another at least 10 spots that weren't available before, you know, because there's a driveway there. So right there, you are picking up some more spaces.
But we're also taking up some spaces by the drive-through and...
I understand that. I was trying to help you.
Oh, no, no. But I don't want, I don't want to get skewed.
But my, again, based on what I know of the plaza, and not with the, the two new stores, but with the plaza, never seen parking come all the way up to, to the ridge. Where that even in Christmas, I mean, it does get, it is pretty crowded Tops, but it doesn't get all that far up. So in picking up those spots along Ridge, it's, it's going to be a tight spot, but I think this, I think this parking's adequate.
Just in terms of the actual application, the request, it says for parking is for 26 spaces because the access, because of the access issue. So if we were to grant a variance contingent on there being an easement that would require the parking, those additional spaces from the 19 to the 26, those additional seven spaces, that the easement would require those spaces to always be available, to remain available, would that be a, a condition that you'd agree with or you'd consent to?
Yeah. Obviously, we're at the...
I mean, would the, the larger lot would agree to always leave those additional seven spaces available? Or...
Well, I think the, the way it's going to look at is that they're, they're not going to just say you have access to 16 spaces. There's going to be, you have access to parking as necessary or, you know, service or maintenance as necessary. Because to access the dumpsters, you would need an easement as well. That's what I'm saying. Service, parking, and access would all be covered underneath that. If the town wants specifically a number of spaces to be used solely for those tenant spaces, we, we can, we can make that work. I just, I, I don't know if that does anything from a realistic standpoint. If, if that's the way it's, it needs to be semantically, from a legal standpoint, we will make that work.
Well, if I understand it, with the easements in place, the easement is going to go to the entire parking lot back and forth. So that if I wanted to park in a spot that's right in front of the Tops door, I could walk over from where I've parked and use Starbucks, and then go to Chipotle, and then come and do my shopping at Tops. And nobody's going to be telling me that I have to move my car because I'm in a Tops spot or a Starbucks spot or a Chipotle spot.
Correct.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a blanket easement that applies. I mean, practically speaking, people, if you want to go to Starbucks, you're going to park closer there. But it is a blanket easement.
Right.
The reason why I was asking is your application says that you're requesting for us to allow you to have 26 spaces, when in reality, you're not. You're asking us to allow you to have 19 spaces.
Right. So the, yeah, so the variance, I'm looking at your application. The variance isn't a variance for 14 spaces. It's actually a variance for--
For 21 spaces.
Right. That's--
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And I'm, I have a hard time, it's 4,000 square feet and it's 19 parking spaces. I'm just going to say, I have a hard time with that, even if the two properties are connected, in reality.
And I think that's for the board to, yeah, that's part of the, the fact that there's this adjacent Plaza right next to it, I think it's a consideration as to--
If it was just a Starbucks, no problem. If it's just a Chipotle, no problem. But trying to put both of them there at the same time, that's what's causing this problem in that space. Does it, I mean, yeah.
Well, we have this pregnant pause right now. I would mention that the people in the town that I've talked to about this are very excited about these two places coming into town. They love the location. I think it'd be the best thing, and they've urged me to support it as a member of this board. And I would like to do that. I think it's a great thing for the town. And I think you're actually saying it is too. It's just that we have this issue with the parking. Am I reading you right?
I, I think that the, I think I'd be much closer to Mr. Polino's position if it wasn't adjacent to a parking, large parking lot, and there wasn't cooperation. We've had other applications for reduced parking where the neighbors have made it very clear that parking cannot be used at their location for the location that's been in front of us. I'm specifically recalling the Polska Chaka restaurant that's across from the Chase Bank next to the Dry Cleaners. And while Chase had no problem, the Dry Cleaner has signs up that your cars will be towed if you park there for using the Polska Chaka--
I don't see that happening in this--
And we, again, we approved that variance for the, for the Polish place, based on the fact that if it became a problem, that there was adjacent space available, that would be available. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, I understand about not wanting, there's a, it didn't come in front of us, but there have been concerns that have been expressed to me by some of the businesses that have, that face Titus Avenue that are part of what's now being developed as I-Square, that the parking is inadequate for their customers based on what's being done in terms of the development. And so I'm, I'm aware that that's a concern for the businesses sometime, but I think this is an entirely different situation from that.
Well, we also have to keep in mind, the same person owns both properties, so if they can't, you know--
They can't get along with themselves.
It's their, it's, they own both the wrong lot.
But I do think it's important that if we prove it, that we make it conditioned upon those easements actually being executed and recorded.
Yes.
Right.
That's a more unacceptable condition.
Any other questions?
Is it right now, the Tops store's going to stay that size? It's not going to be demolished or broken up and--
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Do we know, want to give us any hints what might be going in there?
I have no idea. No advance.
Would you like to start a rumor?
I'd try.
Yeah.
Something that will have a requirement of less than 4.5 spaces per Plaza's square feet.
And I would--
That's what I hear.
I'd also quibble with Mr. Polino's statement. I would hope that it'd be a lot sooner than five years before there'd be a bustling business in there.
I'm glad you pointed that out, Mr. Chairman. That is actually, if it's five years, then we're definitely going to be behind, behind eight ball there.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to say anything to make him more angry toward my presentation. Not that he is.
I'm not angry, no.
No, I know that.
Thorough, thorough.
Yeah.
Oh, no, and I, I understand the point.
I don't know that 19 spaces at 11 o'clock on a Saturday morning is going to be enough. And if something's going to go into the Tops, that's going to have a lot of people there. I mean, right now, it's empty, and we want to change it. We want it to look great. But five years down the road, I don't want people to complain saying, "Why did we sandwich all this stuff in this space? There's not enough parking." And then there's a hazard. Someone could get hit. Someone could get into an accident. I mean, we don't want someone to get hit because there's not enough parking in this area just because right now, it's an I-Square. And because not a lot of people go to the Tops because the parking lot there isn't in good repair. So people don't park towards the back there. I'm just trying to think, five years down the road, what are the potential problems with sandwiching all this stuff together?
Yeah, well, it's part of what we're obligated to do.
Oh, no, it's a legitimate concern, and I wasn't making light of, of your position. I was just trying, I unfortunately can't tell you that, yes, there will not, there will not be a problem two, three, five years down the line. I mean, like you said, it'd be everyone's best possible scenario to say, "Oh, my God, we, we need so much more parking there because it's such a successful area." I would agree with you on that.
And that, that's a problem we really hope that we have to address.
No, but I think that's also a problem that's good for the entire area.
Put a second story up.
Yeah.
Second story parking.
Put a parking grid up. Perfect.
All right, any other questions? All right, then we'll, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the application and isn't sure what they want to say? Seeing no one, we'll close the hearing with respect to, for those who are viewing, all of the other chairs in the room, other than those occupied by those of us who are here every month, are completely empty, except for the first applicant and his spouse.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's why I went through it so fast. We are in recess for about five minutes. This is a Type II action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd, I'll make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to deny this application. And the reason for that is, based on the character of the neighborhood, I think it does affect the character of the neighborhood. I do believe there is an alternative solution. And in granting our variances, typically, we have to have an alternative, or if they don't have an alternative. In this particular event, I think that the alternative solution is that the gentleman does have a business, he does have a place to park the van other than a residence in Aronique. It, it, the adverse effect on the environment, I don't know that that's a concern other than a physical adverse effect on the environment. You know, seeing the, the orange or white truck or whatever the size, whatever the cube truck is, it is a self-created problem because obviously the gentleman, you know, has the truck as a business truck. However, there is an alternative solution, and that is parking at his business, place of business. So again, based on that, I believe that we should not grant this variance.
Okay. Any discussion? My, my recollection of past variances that we've granted with respect to trailers that are used by contractors and others is that they, we have exceeded to their representations that alternative storage places, like storage facilities that allow for storage, are not secure enough to ensure the integrity of the items that they have onboard, usually power equipment and things like that that contractors use. And we have accepted that and granted with conditions, variances that allow for storage of trailers and things like that, making conditions on variances that make the effect less problematic for neighbors, such as in this case, if we were to approve it, I would think that one of the conditions would be that the van would have to be parked to minimize its, its visibility to the adjoining neighbors, that the color would have to be changed back to white, that it'd be granted for a limited period of time, no more than two years, or as long as the car, the van was there, whichever is less, conditions like that. And I think that we've done similar things in, in the past, and I don't think that those kinds of conditions strike an improper balance between the needs of residents, including the needs to practice their business and professions, and those in the neighborhood entitled to reasonable respect for their property and sightlines and things like that, so.
My recollection is, when we have granted variances like this in the past, there have been two noes: no markings, no highly visible markings on the vehicle, and no neighbors that come up and actually complain. I think the last one that we had, there was nice green shrubbery on-- I think the last one that we had, there was nice green shrubbery on one side and it was a white vehicle, it was a box truck that was completely white, and nobody complained about it. And I think in this case, it is a bright orange truck on the sides and there's someone who's right there who says when he opens up his blinds in the morning, he can see it out of his window. And, you know, for better or worse, there's the issue of the signature by the next-door neighbor. All the names on this document have the printed name and the signature underneath it. In this case, there's a scribble and it doesn't look like the scribble's in the same penmanship as the address underneath it. So, when we have one neighbor, you know, voicing a direct objection to it and it is something that's visible, I think it makes it different from the cases we've granted in the, in the past.
I'm specifically recalling, we had one ironically not too far away on Pardee Road with someone had a, I think it was a Time Warner cable truck and the neighbor objected because when he looked out the window on the staircase, all he saw was the truck. And so, we had the truck moved to a different side part of the driveway. He was, probably may even be even more adamantly opposed to that variance than the gentleman here tonight. And, you know, we struck a balance there of having it parked in a, away from the window so that the light would still come into the neighboring window. And that may have been before you joined us, I think. And there've been a few others like that, but, you know, it's just a question of where the, the balance gets struck and obviously that's why there's, we have a multi-member board.
I'm curious what board members would think about granting a variance for a period of only one year and adding the condition that it would be parked in a way where the neighbor, I think it was directly to the south, would not be able to see it from the bedroom window. So, if we kept it at one year, the applicant indicated that at the end of this year, they hope that the house will be for sale and they'll be moving so they won't be in business beyond one year. So, if it could be parked for a shorter period of time, that would be, I think, less of an intrusion on the neighbors.
That would also give the applicant the opportunity to have a year to find an acceptable alternative place. I think we, in the past, I think we gave, there was somebody on Walser or one of those streets that runs-
Walser, we gave the gentleman a few months.
I think we gave him three months.
Three months to move the-
To move the trailer.
Trailer, which he did nothing with and finally moved it on the last day.
Right.
Again, I, I, I'm steadfast to the fact that there is an alternative solution. The gentleman has a business, place of business that he can park the van. I, I, you know, in the past, we've, you know, they haven't had a place to park the van, van or trailer. And the ones that we have approved, most of the neighbors have come and said they love them, they can stay. This particular instance, yes, he does have some signatures, but there is a neighbor next door that doesn't like it. And again, I wouldn't want that big van next to my bedroom window either.
So, if I can really quickly just go over the standards here for an area variance. And I think you touched upon pretty much all the factors. So, it's a, it's a five-part test and no, you know, no one factor is determinative. It's, it's, you know, kind of a balancing test as you look at all the five factors and yet the board tries to kind of weigh them together. And, and so maybe it makes sense, you know, if we go through, you know, each of the five, you know, kind of standards and kind of see where, where the board, you know, kind of shakes up. I mean, the first is whether or not the, you know, the variance causes an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood.
I believe so. It's in a residential neighborhood, you're parking a commercial truck there.
And then, in, sorry to interrupt, in addition, as Chairman had mentioned, I mean, there's, you know, what reasonable conditions, if any, can, can be there to help, you know, ameliorate any of the, you know, impacts that it would have. So, you know, there's, first factor is undesirable change in the neighborhood, whether or not, second factor, is there a feasible alternative? You know, the third is whether or not the, the substantiality of the variance. The fourth, are there any known physical or environmental conditions associated with the variance? And the last being, is it a self-created hardship? Now, I mean, so those are the, the kind of things. And that, and then are there any reasonable conditions that can help? I mean, is there an alternative? It sounds like there is, but is it a feasible alternative? If you're listening to the applicant, the applicant says, well, it's not really feasible given that they've had break-ins and they've had, you know, some security concerns with, with having the truck parked at the business. So, those are kind of the factors that, that, you know, for the board's consideration.
Maybe it's a tough one because we've got these letter signs of people that are saying the truck is back there. And if you look at the neighbor next door now, he's got a ranch and then you're telling him to move the truck up, he's gonna look out his bedroom windows, whatever windows are there, and he's gonna look at the side, an orange side of the van. I mean, so, you know, one part is reasonable, one isn't. And, you know, there's no guarantees that the truck isn't gonna get broken in at the house. My truck was broken in too right in my driveway and I live in Aronacote. So, I mean, it's a, it's a tough one. I know, I understand that. But if we were to, you know, to grant it, I would say everybody would have to say, is it okay for it to be up 15 feet further? You know, that's just what I gotta say, you know?
Again, again, keeping with the fact that Aronacote is a residential neighborhood and, you know, I, I understand that our people that, you know, we all have jobs and different types of jobs require different types of vehicles. But commercial vehicles, commercial trucks, you know, this large are not supposed to be parked in your driveway. And again, there have been a few exceptions, but for the most part, I, I can't say it enough. I wouldn't want it next to my house. And, you know, I'll leave it at that. I mean, I wouldn't want to look out my window and see it.
If we deny the variance, how long will they have to remove it from the property? Thirty days? Or is it, do I have to remove it immediately?
I would, I would assume, you know, we could give them a 10-day thing, you know, obviously Dad's out of town, whatever the case, but, you know, we could put a time limit on it as a condition. I would suggest that if, if we're, that the, if the motion passes, we should put a date in it. I would suggest March 31st, which we should be back by then.
Okay. Would that be all right?
That'd be fair.
Any other discussion?
Well, you know, I'm this way and that way on this, on this motion. I agree with Mike because it's a, it's, I think it does change the character of the neighborhood when you start putting these big vehicles in these suburban driveways. Just the same as boats and other things, you know, laws about all that stuff. I also like Jim's more, I shouldn't say reasonable, that's not what I mean. It's, it's trying to help somebody out for a short period of time that, you know, can we do that and without a long-term effect on, on this neighborhood? So, I, I'm not sure, as I speak, I don't even know how I'm gonna vote yet. I mean, I'm just saying it's, I'm just between a rock and a hard place right here with this one because I don't think it's an extreme variance based on the fact that it's short-term. But I also think it's important that the people in this town realize that this is a, this is not a commercial place, it's a residential place. And they can't automatically assume, well, we'll go to the town and get a variance and we'll be fine. Because it's not automatic, we weigh each case. And when the gentleman says, well, if you, if you give them the permission to park there, then what's to say you can't give it to the next person, the next person? And my answer to that is each case is individual, you know, different factors, different neighbors, the whole thing. So, I don't think doing this one way or the other is actually precedent-setting.
The fact of the matter is the, the rules, the laws, that they're not allowed.
Right.
So, so, you know, we have to go on that as, as the basis and then we grant the exceptions here and there. Again, this one's got an alternative, there's an alternative solution. He doesn't have to have it in his driveway. And, and just because it's a convenience or maybe a safety factor and what Son has said, and I'm not denying it, but there are alternatives. And I don't think the town residents have to, if there, if there was an alternative, then we'd have to consider it stronger, I guess, but-
I, I believe I was just convinced which way I'm going to vote. I don't know why the town of Aronacote residents should have to deal with the fact that the city isn't safe.
Well, that's a good point. And I, and I'm not saying the city's all unsafe, but I, I'm not trying to send that message either, but-
I'm listening to the discussion and I'm, I'm thinking as I sit here that it's not clear, sometimes by this point in the discussion, it's pretty clear as to what the outcome is going to be. In this case, it's not. And I'm looking at the sheet where I keep tally of what, and I turn in, it has what the vote is, and I see that there are two blanks on the sheet. And I'm not sure, from what I've heard so far, that we're gonna have a four-person vote one way or another on this motion. And given the fact that there are two, one vacancy and one member absent, my understanding is that in April, Mr. Hammond will be back. Does anyone believe that they're not going to be here in April who's here tonight? And so, and I have reason, I've been told that there's reason to believe that by our April meeting, we would have another member and have a full complement of members of, of the board. My suggestion would be that we table the motion, reschedule it for a hearing in March when the applicant can come back. It'll give the applicant time to look into alternatives and to present a more definitive plan and maybe work with the neighbor who had an issue or maybe take steps such as changing the color of the van, which seemed to be an objectionable point to people that the color, that could be done. And we would have more of an input from the members who aren't here. So, I would offer a motion to table this to the April meeting for those reasons.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I have a motion and a second to deny right now.
Right.
I think we have to vote-
Don't you have to finish unless that, unless a motion-
I think a motion to table takes priority over the motion that's on the board, if that's correct.
It does.
I think it does. And then we vote on whether, if we vote, if we vote to table it, then the motion, the motion to deny the variance is tabled to April. And if we don't table it, then we'll vote on the, on the motion. And I, that's my understanding of-
Your opinion.
Right. If we table it, we're gonna vote on the motion. Is there a second to the motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor say, well, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna go back to my original motion.
Here's, I mean, here's my, just a point-of-order question. For any motion, whether it is to deny or grant the request, has to be passed by-
Four votes.
Four votes.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's not just the motion to grant the variance that has to be passed by four votes?
The motion to deny it. And what I, what I see potentially here is a vote of three to two, no matter which motion is made.
So, then we could go for the table.
So, if it's three to two, no matter which motion is made, we just keep making motions all night?
We haven't made a decision then.
I mean, it's gotta end somewhere.
No, but then, then you could go for the table.
If we don't table it, what's the resolution?
Right, so, well, I mean, if the motion, so if the motion to deny is not granted, right, so then we're back to, you know, what do we do? So, there's either a motion to approve it or there's a motion to-
Table it.
Because you need, you're gonna need four, either way you go, you need four for valid.
If, if the motion to not, to deny doesn't get four votes and the motion to grant it doesn't get four votes, then what happens to the application?
Well, you mean that motion to table doesn't get four votes?
No, but let's take the motion to table, we're not talking about that. If there's a motion to deny and it doesn't get four votes, and then there's a motion to grant and it doesn't get four votes, what happens to the application?
It's denied. It's deemed, it's, there's not valid board action, it'll be deemed denied unless there's-
So, if, if a motion to grant would have been made and it did not get the requisite four votes, then it would be deemed denied. Is that correct?
Well, then there could have been, well, it wouldn't have been valid, you wouldn't have had valid board action. So, then they could have, if they wanted to-
I thought it was if we didn't have valid board action within 60 days, it was deemed at the bottom.
Well, that's after, that's-
Second's a motion to table.
After the public hearings close, if there's, right, if there's a vote on, voting on the application. So, I don't think the town vote requires it to be deemed denied, but it-
So, if we were to take the vote based on my motion and you didn't have enough, it would be approved or it would be revoted on or tabled?
No, it wouldn't be approved. So, the, the board has-
So, why, at this point, not to interrupt, but at this point, why don't we vote on my motion and see what happens? And then if not, we go the next step.
We can do that. That's fine.
To, to pass the motion to table, we need four votes in, in support? So, if two people vote against the motion to table, it will not pass? Is that correct? Or is it majority of present?
No, you need a majority of the full quorum of the board. So, you need four for-
To table?
To table.
To, to table two, yes.
Okay.
And you have the, the 60 days, so yes. So, after the close of the public hearing, you have 62 days upon which to render a decision on the variance. So-
So, we can, if we hear the motion to table, if we entertain it and two people vote against it, then the motion to deny will be, will be determined, right?
I think we're voting on the motion to deny right now.
So, it appears that the, I'll withdraw the motion to table and we'll vote on the motion for the variance, to deny the variance. So, all those in favor of the motion, which is to deny the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Who was that?
I said aye.
You said aye?
Aye.
You said aye, okay. And those opposed would be yours truly. So, the vote, the, there's four members voting to deny the variance, one voting against, there's no abstentions, and there's one member absent. So, the variance is denied.
Thank you.
All right. I wasn't sure. You're, all right. The next item on our agenda is the application with respect to 1495 Eastridge Road. I thought this was a type-two action for seeker purposes, but you indicated it might not be.
Correct. There are, there are elements of the variances that are type-two and we're talking about the setbacks. But since there are some lot area and, and I think lot depth variances, I think this throws it into a, as it makes it an unlisted action. So, what the applicant had done, and my understanding that the planning board, this was an uncoordinated review under secret and the planning board had, had issued its own negative declaration to the project indicating that there's no, in the planning board's opinion, no significant adverse environmental impacts associated with their, with their approval. And the applicant has prepared a draft, Part II of the Short Environmental Assessment Form for the board's consideration. And so, it's probably, you know, appropriate in discussing the variances to kind of go through, go through the app, go through the Part II of the EAF in connection with what, you know, what the environmental impacts are and then discuss the, the variances. I don't know if we want to take them, we'll need to vote on them, unfortunately, individually, there are five of them.
Right.
And they all kind of present different, different issues, so.
There's an environmental report that we're supposed to be looking at?
There, uh, well, I was provided with a-
That we have not seen yet.
It's in there.
Oh, it is?
It should've been in there, but this is the one that you filled out. Labella filled out for us.
Okay.
I don't recall seeing the-
I didn't get one.
Fire marshal and the rest was coming from down.
It should've been in there.
In, in the packet, we had the memo from the planning board indicating a positive referral. We had the record of the decision of the planning board where they made a negative declaration. And we had the letter from Costage Engineering and-
I got it.
We had the memo from the fire marshal and the memo from the County Department of Planning. Now, we have a copy of this.
I'm sorry, just to clarify that this is where Labella filled out the second portion of two.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay. Pardon? So this is... So before the board can vote on the variances themselves, we need to first go through SEAGAR and issue either a negative or a positive declaration. Now, you can see in the proposed responses here to the Part II that were provided to the board, there were not any impacts that were identified as moderate to large, or they were all checked as the no impacts or small impacts.
Proposed by whom, based on what evidence?
This was... My understanding was proposed by... Proposed by the applicant. So, yeah, I would propose that we look through these questions, and then the board obviously reach its own determination. Was it? Yeah. If there's... Mark, if you'd like to provide it.
I might correct. I'm not sure which one you're looking at, because the applicant did, in fact, complete a Part II of the EAF with little dots in each of the squares. But Lobella was also asked to prepare for your consideration a Part II of the EAF and to include some rationale in the Part III as a straw document for you to review. And the one that Lobella completed, actually, in the boxes, there are checks. So if you're seeing very plain checks in the boxes, then you're looking at the document that Lobella prepared on your behalf.
Okay. Sorry, I misspoke then. This was the one that was completed by the town's engineers.
And then Lobella prepared the Part III determination?
Right. Just for your consideration, obviously. It's your decision, but just to kind of get the ball rolling, we were asked to provide something for you to review. I can go down them individually if you want, but it's pretty clear from looking down through the Part II. And these are new forms that you may be somewhat unfamiliar with. These are the new forms that DEC issued began using in October, so they're different from the older short form, short EAF forms that are used... Were used in SEAGAR up to that point in time. And so, in our evaluation at least, taking into account the project that was proposed, together with all the variances that were requested, we did not find that any of these impacts, one through 11, on Page Three and Page Four, potential impacts, none of them were moderate to large. And in fact, in each instance, we came to the conclusion that there was either no impact or a very small impact.
The remediation of the environmental hazards, could you tell us a little bit about that? I mean, if we're going to be making a determination that there's no environmental issue, and it's a gas station, could you give us some kind of assurance that there is no issue?
Well, I'd probably want to defer to the applicant on that, but I can just tell you that we based completing that form on the representation made in the Part I of the EAF, which is the applicant's responsibility that stated that the remediation had been already completed. So that's our understanding, is that that site's been remediated.
I assume that means that there was... If there was any impact of it being a gas station, that's cleared up. The tanks are gone, soil's been tested, in case there was leakage, any of that stuff.
That's my understanding from reading the information that they... From reading Part I of the EAF that they submitted.
And the fire marshal has given me documentation to that as well.
And we did have a memo from the fire marshal that indicated that he found no issues with the site, no issues with the proposed development, and no adverse consequences from granting the variances that were requested by the applicant, so...
The only change I would note in the Part III discussion, there's a sentence here, I think it's probably the third sentence where Lobella had inputted the justification, and it says that the proposed use consists of only 4,000 square feet and approximately 26 parking spaces. I think that should be 19.
I would agree with that revision, based on the discussion tonight.
Yeah.
What's the next proper step for declaring this a negative?
So what we need to do, there needs to be a motion. I would make a motion that we adopt the short form environmental assessment form that's been presented to us, and conclude, based on the information contained therein, that this will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and would be a negative declaration. Is there a second?
Second.
Just to make sure, we are making determination that building over a gas station is not going to have any adverse environmental impact based on the memo from the fire marshal?
And the representation by the applicant that the remediation steps have all been taken. So if, in the event that it were to be determined at a later date that there was some issue, then that would result in this not being an accurate determination, and the applicant would be responsible, I think, for misrepresenting.
Where's the... Where is the representation by the applicant? Is it in one of the documents that we have? And I mean, I might...
The first section, the first section of the...
Which ours isn't completed, the first section.
Ours isn't completed. We don't have their document.
Right. And just to clarify, so we're not... The environmental impacts associated with the building over a former gas station, my understanding, has been reviewed by the planning board, when they issued their, I believe it was a site plan approval. With this board's consideration of the environmental impacts associated with the variances that they're requesting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
So, you know, we're talking about, you know, for the parking variances, are there going to be significant adverse traffic impacts? Or, you know, are there impacts because they only want... They are rear setback shorter than what the code requires. I mean, those are... That's the scope of the environmental analysis here.
The motion still is good, though, isn't it?
Yeah. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries five in favor and no opposed. And that's a negative declaration. And now we can move on to the substance of the five variances that are being requested. I have one decision sheet, but I'll try and keep track of the five in mind.
I apologize.
That's all right. No problem. I understand. So the first variance that's requested is for a variance of 48 feet from the corner of Side Street with Goodness Street, and it should be a 50 under the code, so that's a two-foot variance. I would... Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept this variance. It's not a substantial variance. It isn't going to affect environmental impact at all. It is... Alternative solution is to not have it there, and then you won't have a drive-up window for Starbucks. The variance is not substantial, it's only two feet. It's only two feet and a short section of a drive-up window. It is a self-created problem because they want a drive-up window.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One board member is absent, and we have one vacancy. All right? The second variance would be the rear setback variance. The code requires 60 feet. The request is for a five-foot rear setback. The variance would be a 55-foot variance. Is there a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we approve this variance, based on the following. The... Although the variance seems to be, by the numbers, substantial, the fact that it's in the middle of a parking lot area, and no really close neighbors, it really doesn't have an impact. And as far as all the other factors are concerned, that's the one that stands out. It's not going to change the environmental conditions, and although it's self-created by... Just through the plan itself, it's not enough to deny this, so I move that we accept it.
I'll second. Mr. Paulino beat you to the punch. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion also carries five votes in favor, no... None opposed, no abstentions. One board member is absent, and we continue to have one vacancy on the board. The third variance would be the parking variance, which the code requirement would be for 40 spaces. The request, as we determined, is for 19, and the variance would then be 21 spaces. Is there a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. The... Again, based on all the criteria of the not changing the character of the neighborhood, it's not going to affect it. The alternative solution is, in granting this variance, there is no alternative solution other than selling off some property from the main parcel to this parcel. But based on the... It's not going to have an adverse effect. The variance is technically, by the numbers, it's substantial, but it's not substantial. Again, kind of the same reason we're so close on the lot line. It's not substantial because they own the parcel next to it, and it's all parking lot, and they're utilizing it as together. I would, however... It is a self-created problem, and again, because they want to put the building up in that corner. I would, however, in approving this variance, and they did say that they were... They had them in place, but the easements must be in place, both sides of the easements for both properties involved. And again, knowing that the same company owns both properties, I'm sure the easements will be filed for the properties.
Is there a second?
Aye. Second, I'm sorry. Were they going to go for the other variance, though, on the lot?
In April, I think, or May, depending upon when they get it in. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right. The motion carries by a vote of four in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, one absent, and one vacant. The fourth variance request would be for a variance of the lot dimension. 200-foot depth is required under the code. The request is for 126 feet, and the variance would be 74 feet. Is there... Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Make a motion that we approve this variance, based on the fact that the... Once again, this is not an enclosed neighborhood. It's wide open, a lot of space around it for both owners, which happens to be the same person, and that the dimension of the 200 feet does not have the impact it might on another place. It will not have any great... No impact on the environmental conditions. There's no reasonable alternative to this, because we're trying to get this thing built and done in a limited area. And it's only self-created because there's no other alternative to it.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries five votes in favor, no votes opposed, no abstentions. One board member continues to be absent, and we continue to have one vacancy. The fifth application as part of this would be for the lot area requirement. The requirement would be for 20,000 square feet. The lot has 18,975 square feet. The variance is for 1,025 square feet, and the lot area that's being requested is identical to the existing lot area that is a pre-existing non-conforming use. So by... If we grant the variance, we're not changing it, but we're changing it from a pre-existing non-conforming use to a use allowed by a variance. Anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. The... It's obviously not going to change the character of the neighborhood. The alternative solution is to actually cut up the other parcel and give them a little more space. But again, because the two land... Two parcels are owned by the same company, I don't think that's a necessary thing to do. I also believe, based on the easements that are going to be covering the properties for parking and access, well, bless you, will cover it. It is not an adverse effect, and the variance is not substantial. It is a self-created problem, based on the fact that they don't want to cut up the properties. A little bit of it adds something to do with the financial mortgage holders in reference to the properties. So, again, based on the criteria, I think we can approve that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries a vote of five votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board remains absent, and we continue to have one vacancy. I believe, unless someone is aware of something else, I believe that concludes all of our business for the evening, and we would adjourn.